The call to order in one committee to make him in Wolverham Regional School District's school committee meeting. It is 6:30 PM. I see the Dave Sanders from Wolverham Public Access Channels recording. Is there anyone else here recording this meeting? Okay, we will do roll call in alphabetical order. Phil Boncenti. Cheryl Carolina.
Here.
Sean Kennedy.
Here.
Patrick Herden.
Present.
Lisa Murray.
Here.
Maura Ryan.
Here.
Michelle Boudreaux. Here. If you please stand, more will be given in a second meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have a need for executive session pursuant to master general law. See Chapter 30A, Section 21A, free to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a documental effect on the bargaining position of public body and the chair so declares. Side letter of agreement, curriculum council.
Ah, so moved.
Second.
We will do roll call for executive session. Cheryl.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
It's okay, I'm not a few, all right?
Uh-huh.
I'm not a few. Yeah, but you can hear me.
So you guys are getting your coming up party of sorts initiated.
No, no.
Do you want to settle the motion from that or?
Okay.
Okay, so we will continue. We are going to move forward with the student representative report. Do we have either Molly, Boo, or Nick or Deebo? They're not at the meeting. Okay, we can circle back if they are. Thank you. So we'll continue with the student services report. We'd like to do a.
So this is, um.
I'm sorry. So Mary is at home, she's taking notes at home, so if everyone would please be sure to speak into the microphone, that would be greatly appreciated.
Hi, Mary.
Okay, so I just have a few updates that I wanted to give to you. So the first one is, I know I mentioned that we were moving toward electronic signature for our IUDs and I just wanted to say that that is going great. We contracted with ReadySign, so instead of having to send our IUDs out through the mail and then have the parent sign it and send it back, that was really time consuming and we didn't get the IUDs back in a timely manner, so this has been working great. I need to give credit for this to Karen Roberts, has been a huge asset to student services. She's helped us to enter the 21st century and start to be more electronically based. So moving on to another thing that's electronically based now, our preschool applications. We used to have paper copies where the parents would have to download copies of the preschool application, fill it all out and then get it into us, but now it's completely on a Google form that they can fill out right online. And we have open applications now. Anyone who applies by January 31st gets priority for placement into spots in our preschool program. We have a rolling admission, so we're always accepting applications. You're eligible as soon as you turn three years old to enter our preschool program. Cheryl?
I just have a question about the, um. I just have a question about the electronic signatures. For those people who maybe just have phones but don't have access to internet, which is quite different for two years during COVID.
So we always give the option to receive the IUD through paper means if we don't have access to internet?
I was wondering if they could do it through their phone? It's just about everybody has a smartphone.
Yeah, they can sign through their phone.
Okay.
I got another question.
Can you use the laptop to view some of your?
Sure, sure. You use Google Docs? And this is something that's, whether you send it to applications or the forms themselves?
Just a preschool application. It's a Google Doc.
Yeah, you understand that Google Docs is not secure or anything like that, so you want to make sure that what information is put on there, I would recommend.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
So the next update is just on our transition program. I know I mentioned to everyone that we started an internship program with one of our maintenance supervisors, Herb Foley, is training three kids to do everything that maintenance staff does, and he had his first opportunity after training by Herb, he went into Stony Hill School and it was his first day being able to pretty much function in a custodial capacity in another building besides CWB. So we think that's a great program. I am very happy that Herb was willing to do that for us. Another update is we have a new educational team leader that's going to be starting with us on January 17th. We were able to hire for this position because we had a counselor that resigned in the fall and we decided that instead of hiring another counselor, we would hire an educational team leader so that the two psychologists at Stony Hill and Soul Road would be able to give up their ETL responsibility to be able to support the socio-emotional well-being at both schools more, working collaboratively with the counselors. Next is just family outreach coordinator position. We hired Colleen Boudreaux and she's been doing an amazing job reaching out to families, connecting them with services, and really she's a huge asset to the department.
I'm sorry, what does she do?
She is, Carol Connor had this position before, so the counselors make her goals to Colleen so that she can connect families with outside agencies to provide support for that.
That's great. I mean, you know, Colleen and Herb really stepping up like that as well as the psychologist, that's good news, thank you.
That's all I got. So, thank you. Any questions? Comments? Thank you so much. We'll continue with Mary, we'll go to you.
All righty. So included with your packets is the usual monthly financial report. Worth noting, we are now halfway through the fiscal year and we're a few weeks shy of the school year, halfway through the school year, so thanks, I very appreciate the tape sheet. I'm going to call up some major items of concern and interest and then I'm going to share a change in presentation with you that I think is a little more transparent for what's going on. So to start, our top concern continues to be special education costs, sorry Gina. You're going to see the private added district cost line 9300 is expected to be about $350,000 over budget, and our contract costs for e-district needs is a significant factor in some overages in our instructional therapeutic line 320. So if you're following along at home, with your budget, the line functions on the far left is what you're looking for in their numeric order. Overall substitutes continues to be a pretty significant budget factor. Absences remain higher than at the COVID levels. Sort of to give you some comparison, I pulled up some numbers for past years. In 2020, we had a total of 3,167 absence days requiring a substitute. In 2022, we had 5,519 days requiring a substitute. This is a 74% increase or more than $212,000 in added costs in that period of time. So that's a pretty big shift. You know, whether it's COVID related, our hope has been that the COVID leave was going to start to be on the decline. However, as of today, we've had 2,374 absence days requiring a substitute and we're less than halfway through the year. So if you look at that from a trend standpoint, we're probably going to match 2022 this year going forward. So that's something we need to think about as we come up to next year. A number of instructional items are over budget and they're largely intended to be covered by choice and ESAR funds as part of the budget plan. You'll see below where I addressed those. The added Minichaw High School Assistant Principal line 2210 will be offset by school choice funds, while some added instructional support will be covered by ESAR funds. Instructional support can to some degree be covered into fiscal 2024, so if we do have that need, we are going to be having conversations about how best to use our ESAR funds in the next year and utilize that, whether it's adjustment counselors, instructional support, or a combination. Assuming we may remain retain our commitment to choice at Minichaw, we added administration will be covered as well. So as you recall, we have some of our choice numbers a little bit at Minichaw, given the decline in counts and the intent was that that would cover the cost of the assistant principal. Natural gas and electric rates have increased significantly since the 2023 budget was passed. That's represented in heat and utilities lines 2120 and 2130. We're planning for increases in both of those lines as we prepare the 2024 budget. So again, those were, play a lot of the inflationary pressures, particularly as we talk about energy costs, were something we just didn't plan for as we were planning the 2023 budget. Insurance lines just here considerably over budget. This leads into sort of my formatting change that I spoke of. In the past, these lines were offset by our choice funds directly in our budget report through what's called a contract account that was established. This led to some confusion around the actual cost of health insurance, and I feel like highlighting the true cost and demonstrating the available offset at the bottom of the report is more appropriate and transparent. So rather than seeing a line item that is vastly below what the true cost is, you are now seeing your true cost with the offset reflected below.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
So if you go to the very bottom of the report, there are two lines, I'm going to work on continuing to add some items. You will see that choice not yet applied to the budget is $835,000.
Can you tell me what function line?
It's actually in the notes section. You go all the way down to the bottom of each two.
Okay.
To the bottom of the entire report. So there's $835,000 that we budgeted in choice funds and ESAR support of $50,000, but we have considerably more than $350,000 of ESAR funds available to support the budget this year and next year. So you'll see down below, I've included the budgeted ESAR offset of $350,000 as well. And so if you add those up, our true available funds is in excess of $1,620,000, which is definitely below where we were at this point last year, but within, I think, the realm of what's realistic to expect, given some of the challenges we have. So again, we do have significant ESAR funds. We've managed to salvage a fair bit of ESAR and we can apply considerably more to the budgeting needs. And look at where it makes sense to do that. As the year progresses and we move expenses from the general fund to choice and ESAR, what I'll do is I'll in turn decrease the choice and ESAR amounts that remain available. So we will sort of demonstrate what remains available and what's been spent on choice and ESAR as we pull it out of the general fund budget. So we do a process of journal entering, external entering expenses from one account to another. And so as we go through the year, we will take those funds from the general fund and put them into either the choice account or the ESAR account as the year progresses. And we'll start doing that very soon, so I will reflect that probably in the next report we provide. Sort of on a final note, a lot of the items I've shared where we're over budget for 2024 this year and 2024 are consistent among other districts statewide. I'm routinely in communications with colleagues throughout the region, I'm also on the business administrative list served, and these are common issues and concerns for every district in the state. A lot of it comes from increasing spend tuitions, increasing costs and decreasing numbers, but everybody's doing some of that. Most districts I'm talking to are looking at potential budget increases in the 8% range right now. So, that's the news. As is. Yes, sir.
I saw the memo that you sent out yesterday about full lighting.
About what?
Full lighting?
Yes.
I'm sorry. The memo that you sent out about the lighting.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
I did have, I did have a couple of people reach out to me about it. If you can just update the folks in.
Yeah, so the day before break started, we received word from our vendor who was supposed to do the work over break, that they would not be showing up to do the work over break. So we're back to the drawing board. As I shared, this is, remains a proprietary product, so you know, I think we shared the cost of pulling out the entire lighting system and replacing it with an entirely new lighting system would have been millions of dollars. We've managed to do that for substantially less. Unfortunately, it retains much of the same systems. The system is still a proprietary system owned by the parent of a parent of a parent company now. The original company was bought multiple times, so we are hoping to schedule something as soon as possible. This is a multi-day job, so it's not something we may be able to do over a weekend, so we may be forced to extend to February.
So do we have a contract in place with them that said that they were going to do this work? Was it in writing that they were going to do this work during that timeframe?
We do not have a strict contract that states this.
Did we have anything in writing from them saying that they were going to do the work that week?
Oh, we certainly have, certainly have.
Because I think we need to, I'm hoping that you're going back to them to say that they, we don't, we're not obligated to pay them in full.
Sure.
They didn't need the date and the time from it there, because this is now becoming a disservice to us that I think means we'll get charging them back for some of the electricity costs.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if they committed to doing that and meeting that timeframe.
Agreed.
Hey, do you have the electricity cost? I know a couple of people have asked.
I don't, I don't have an estimate that they might with me now I could get that. You know, we could look at energy costs last year versus, last year actually, we had the lighting issue as well, so we have to literally go back two years and figure out the sort of cost differential, we can certainly do that. You might have to go back to health photos and that. Right, you might have to go back to, because that's going to put you right in the middle of COVID.
Yeah.
The body of your lighting is phenomenal.
Right. You have to go, you have to go back to 2019.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it'd be interesting to see and how much money we've actually spent on this, because I think it's important for people in the community to understand, you know, how much this is costing us.
We should see if we can recoup some of that cost back from now.
Since hearing it's been our intent to do that, it's, it's just been such a short timeframe, we've had break and things like that, we're going to pull that up and try to build a beat to the fire as much as possible. Okay, thanks.
Is Reflex Lighting the provider or the technology owner?
They are the technology owner. The, I don't have the memo with me. Is it HZ Lighting or?
And Zimmerman?
Hmm?
And Zimmerman.
Yeah, HZ Lighting is the provider, so they're the distributor, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So across the distributor, it's the issue not per se the owner or whatever the technology is that we're using?
No, Reflex is the owner of the technology. So they would have been doing the, HZ provided the product as a distributor and then Reflex is providing the install services.
Reflex and Cooper.
Yeah.
Cooper bought this light and then Reflex bought them all.
So Reflex bought Eaton, which owned Cooper Lighting, that's what the issue is, so Reflex owns, that's what I'm trying to understand, who actually owns the technology?
Yes, right. In Canada, which was bought out by Reflex. Reflex was, I wanted, excuse me, bought out by Cooper Lighting, which is why I want to be.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We're going to circle back to our student representative. Molly, thank you. Leah?
Thank you for having me here. Sorry for being a little bit rushed and delayed, but.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, so, Charles Hoppy is playing DC, hi, at ten ways, twelve, so buy your tickets. I probably won't be out there, but group for them, so I'll be there. Friday, tomorrow, Theater Workshop is having the production of Everyone Gets eaten by Sharks. Also, finals are quickly approaching, January 19th and 20th, we're having our exams. They're both half-days, one is, the first day is just for the high school, second day is for the district. Above the Influence Club is hosting a clothing drive for the Miravista Behavioral Health Center from the 3rd to the 30th. I've already seen a bunch of donations piling up, so that's good. Student Council is having a dine-out fundraiser on the 11th at Chapoule. Our student body president loves Chapoule, so I'll try to be there. Student Council is also going to Hyannis for their state conference in March, and there's like, we had like 16 people who could go, so 16 were announced today. And then Student Council is also having a Build a Snowman can drive for its local survival center, which the teacher that gets the most cans under their name has to dress up as a snowman. So that's coming up soon, should be on January. And don't worry, I did get into two colleges, updated for those. Absolutely.
Which ones?
So far, I've gotten into Stony Hill and St. Louis with slipbook EB scholarships, which I'm happy about. Seven more to hear back from.
Still early.
Still early.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions for Molly?
Were you at the basketball game?
I was not at the basketball game, but I was doing good.
I walked by. I thought I could steal the ball from them up and do a layup, so I was like, that's great, I don't know.
Yeah, they just put me in.
There you go, definitely.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
So it's going to flash, don't worry.
Marvin, we continue with your business. We'll move on to time on the radio.
Thank you. At the last school committee meeting, a concern was raised about equity of learning opportunity for middle school students at Green Meadows based on the way they start time they have on half-days. I responded that we don't measure learning from student drop-off to student pickup, we count the actual structured learning time as defined in the regulations because passing time, lunch, recess, et cetera, are not the same at all schools. We also have a regulatory obligation with respect to structured learning time, so that's what we pay attention to as administrators, whereas the length of day is discretionary within the scope of the contracts. So, one of the things that I did after that meeting was look at the middle school schedules at both Wolverham Middle School and Green Meadows to take a look at their actual structured learning time. The result of this calculation is in your packet. As you'll see, we don't have an equity issue. Directing your attention, you'll see that there are 977 hours of structured learning time scheduled at Green Meadows and 976 and a half hours of structured learning time scheduled at Wolverham Middle School. So the principals did a really good job of matching up their schedules so that students are being treated fairly at both schools. However, we have an adequacy issue, because by regulation, secondary schools must have a minimum of 990 hours of instructional time for students. Time that students spend at breakfast, at lunch, in passing between classes, in homeroom, at recess, and other non-directed study periods, or receiving school services and participating in optional programs don't count towards meeting the minimum structured learning time requirement. When you add up all the minutes of scheduled instructional learning time of the year, we come up 13 hours and 13 and a half hours short of the regulatory minimum at Green Meadows and Wolverham Middle respectively. So the options for correcting this are limited. Really, it comes down to reducing passing time at a lunchtime, of recess, or extending the length of the day, or reducing professional development time. I'm glad we discovered this now, because small changes over a large number of days are a lot easier to implement than large changes over a small number of days. But the most important thing is the process used to select a solution. It's an opportunity to practice meeting together, and Principals DeRozia and Mober will be working with their middle school teams to identify the solution that's most acceptable to all, and I'll update the committee once the necessary adjustments have been made.
You're welcome.
Has this been consistent throughout? Can we go back and look at years past?
I did not go back and look at years past. I do know that additional professional development days were added recently. My suspicion is that that may have pushed us over the limit, over the limit. Okay. It's now my pleasure to introduce Mike Messer and Dave Rogers to the school committee. If you gentlemen would not mind stepping forward a little bit. I put those chairs.
In the hot seat, sorry for you.
When Ed Sanandella announced his retirement, he decided to do some restructuring and shift some of his duties to Mike and Dave. Mike has been with the district since 1998. During that time, he was overseeing renovation projects at Stony Hill and Green Meadows. He was also the project manager for the Minichaw Construction Project. Dave has been with the district since 2017 and worked his way up from facilities technician to the role he's currently serving in. In addition to facilities work, Dave has been very involved with the safety, wellness, and emergency action team. He coordinates water quality testing and pest management for the district, as well as the district's emergency threat alert system, and it's my pleasure to introduce them to you all.
Thank you.
He started in the 19th century. Wonder? He did that project on the flight for 98.
Sorry.
No?
Gentlemen, if something comes up and you need something, or if you have any ideas that you want to share with the committee, please just let us know and let us know, we'd be good help. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thanks for being here.
I have one question, sorry.
So now, it's more for instance for John, but like as far as the air quality and stuff goes, I know one of the issues and concerns with COVID was the air quality and the measuring of the air and how people had access to the readings if they wanted that? Would that fall under one of these two fine gentlemen?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Because you talked about water and some of the other things, but not the air quality stuff.
I have a question for Mike. I know you've been right on top of keeping track of how Minichaw is, the structure of the building is going. Are we in good shape? Do we have a couple of years left in this?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, there's things that are dying now because of age, 10 years and stuff like that. It's controllable stuff, it's motors and barrels and belts and normal stuff that works. The roof had a couple of leaks and we chased them and found them, we're still chasing one in the bathroom, but other than that, the building was a beautiful building. I'm assuming everybody that comes in is. I'm assuming everybody that comes in this building with you says, wow, this building is in very, very nice condition.
I think it's in the shape it's in because of your hard work from the maintenance division's hard work.
And the grounds and everything, I mean, people come here and think it's a college campus. They're really, really enjoying being there, I enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could we instruct Ronnie, just send the both of these gentlemen an invite to the roundtable on the matter team? I'm sure there's gonna be questions about school facilities. Twice a year, we have a bunch of roundtables where committees from both towns to look at budgetary issues, and so it'd be great to have you there, because questions always come up about capital projects involving schools, so you guys would be the gentlemen to take some of those questions.
Come have fun with the rest of us. That one's a fun one, though, it says everybody. Thank you so much, thanks for coming today. Thank you so much.
We will continue with old business and move on to the vote for the side letter agreement for the council.
Sure. Since the position of curriculum council has been created, we've had a few brief discussions at the committee about moving that stipend to appendix B. Our attorney has drafted a side letter that accomplishes that for a two-year period. It does have sort of a natural ending, so that if we're unhappy with it, we're not bound to this forever. If we are happy with it, we can make it part of the successor agreement when the new contract is negotiated. I have shared this with the union, and they're satisfied with the agreement too, so I would request a vote to approve.
Vote to approve, that's ready.
Second.
All in favor, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Sure. So earlier, Aaron was talking about the business managers list serve. There's one for the superintendents as well. And one of the most common uses of the superintendent's list serve is to share information and experiences about positions that districts are thinking of creating. And after our last meeting, I planned to reach out to colleagues to solicit information about job descriptions, salary ranges in general, like experiences with grant writers. However, one of my colleagues, who I think is also considering the same possibility, beat me to the punch by asking all this on the list serve in the form of a survey. So the responses indicated that at least twenty districts have grant writers. In half of the districts, the position is part-time, in half it's full-time. So far, I've been able to gather two job descriptions, which I've put in the packet, and I've been able to speak to one colleague at length about the way the position works in their district. Both the job descriptions you have fall into the part-time camp. In one case, the position is split between clerical duties and grant writing. In the other case, the position is split between cooperative education and grant writing. To pass on a little of what's been shared with me, one of the superintendents explained that the work is cyclical, so it's helpful to pair it with other duties so that when it involves in the grant writing work, the person has some other useful functions they can provide for the district. I was also advised that this is a very trainable position, so if we don't hire someone away from another district, we could grow our own. And we talked about both of those options last time as well. The key that I've heard, if you do go down the pathway of growing our own, is to pick someone with excellent written language skills, which may be obvious, but share that. Also, I gathered a little information about what might be a realistic expectation for a part-time grant writer, and I think that they're likely, the likely annual production of the position would be measured in hundreds of thousands of grants rather than millions. Also, able to gather some information about salary ranges in our part of the state, which seem to be in the range of eighty thousand to a hundred thousand. But again, those are usually part-time positions, where part of it is grant writing, part of it is something else to make a full-time position. So I think I have a good chance of gathering at least one more job description and speaking with at least one more superintendent, and I'll pass that information along as well as we think about how this position might look in our district.
Yeah, John, what are the next steps?
The next steps would be to develop a job description, develop a salary range, identify a funding source, and post design. Assuming this would be a position for the next facility, because it's not currently in a budget.
Do you have any idea what position you might, I'm sorry. Do you have any idea on what position you might sort of dovetail this with? Just off the top of your head, is anything you'd?
I do have some ideas. I haven't had a chance to discuss this with anyone, but I would say that it's been my impression that we're a little underpowered in special education administration. If we could do something to provide some support in that office, I think it would be a good move.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen.
I have a number of questions.
Okay, sure.
I don't know.
Oh, so if you don't mind, if one would just come up here?
Yes. I don't know the protocol, I have not been to one before.
So we have, in your calls, a recall.
Sit here.
Yeah, sure, and you can state your name and address, and you'll sit at the designated location, and you can speak for up to two minutes. Just please make sure you speak into the microphone, thank you.
Yeah, I'm a former this job. All right, my name is Joe Roberts, I live in four oh four Mountain Road. My question has to do with this lighting situation. Everybody here, I don't have to tell you, the overpriced electricity, the amount of taxes here, I find it really frustrating, how did we get here? I've heard all kinds of things on the form of what started it. I'm frustrated that we have a proprietary system. I've heard that the company's defunct, but then I hear people say that it's been bought. So I really don't know what's going on. I'd like to speak to somebody offline who's close to it to try to find out what really is going on. Like, for example, what operating system does this thing use? It's probably Linux maybe, I don't know, I'm a electronics engineer, semi-retired now. I find it frustrating that nobody, apparently nobody here has any knowledge of this system, how to operate it, how it works, how we got here. Do we have like a list of IP addresses, a map of this whole system? Or does the contractor keep that as personal and private information? We should have, we should have full diagrams of this system, and somebody in this, within the school should have some basic knowledge of how it works and how it operates. Wyatt, what was the reason the vendor said they couldn't show up?
They, I, they actually had, had been a deep question. I'm sorry, just would the committee like me to answer?
Do you want to finish your statement?
Well, that's, that's pretty much it. I'm frustrated as a taxpayer, taxes have gone away. And when I, I loathe waste, and I'm seeing here, people always saying, you know, they really think you can conserve money, and I ran quick. I just had to guess at how many kilowatt hours was burned based on estimates, and it's well into the thousands of dollars. It's probably higher, yes. No, I'm just saying, maybe your time is up. Quiet, quiet, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Do you want to do a reading for this, we could have answers to this on the.
I would leave the details in the comments that you have. Aaron's getting some information for the next meeting. Based on his comments, I think that there's no reason to do that at the next meeting.
The other thing to consider too is, you know, there's, there's a long history here. So I, and maybe at this service, we say to Aaron, hey Aaron, what's going on? Because, I mean, we've got to dig back into the, you know, into what happened at the construction place, my experience at the construction place of this building. I have a good idea, as far as, you know, how we look up at this system, but, you know, I think that if we had a little bit more of an historical perspective, we'd make provides some clarity for members of the committees.
Thank you.
I just wanted to publicly say that Aaron has just posted the link for this meeting on the website. I think the other previous link was not working, so anyone that's watching and you're trying to sign up for public comment, I'm looking to just email you,
Could you say that one more time, the email address?
Bedowning, bedowning@hwrsd.org.
Downing, D-O-M-E-D-I-N-G.
Okay, we'll move on to the subcommittee updates. We'll start with the curriculum subcommittee. Thank you. Final statements?
We meet on Monday.
We'll move on to the board, any guys have thoughts of it, please say? I have nothing to report for the corporation, nothing to report for negotiations, call to second me.
You should have had a second reading, because I apologize if it wasn't yet for the December fifteenth meeting, but they should have had a reading at that meeting, and then I think tonight should have been the final reading.
Yes.
No, there was, of the second set too? Okay. So then, thank you for doing that, I apologize, I quit making last meeting. We did a meeting last night, just a quick update is we're reviewing policies with regards to photographs, social media, and library. Our next meeting is February first at the district office at four thirty PM, if anybody would like to join. And we will also have that available for a remote option for participation.
Thank you.
I do have one thing I want to mention with Aaron. Aaron, we had talked about the policy for the MAS C with regards to the procurement change that they were gonna have. They still have not come up with language, I just want to make sure, I circle back with you, because I've been watching the newsletters and following up with the MAS C, just to make sure we get that to you as quickly as possible, as it's available.
Yep, thank you.
They're still waiting on the office of the inspector general.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to circle back with you.
Have we set up a meeting for the planning committee yet?
So we're looking at Tuesdays, and it's just about coordinating which Tuesday will work for this month, like all of the numbers. Do you have any more?
I'm available, do you think?
Perfect. So we move on to the consent agenda.
Make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
I just have noticed that our meeting minutes have gotten longer to review, and I know at one point we had talked about, it's kind of really just not telling, a lot of, not all of the information that you see now, but more along the lines of just giving someone the idea of what the meeting discussed and what was there. And I think there's some comments in there that should have quotations around them, because people are thinking versus the way that they're just written out. I think we need to kind of take it again. What do we as a committee want our minutes to reflect as this becomes public record? I think sometimes the information on there is, may not be accurate.
That's why we have the vote, so if you see something that's not accurate or something that you said, you could always bring it up and have a change for them. But I understand.
I'd just like to see it all a little shorter.
I, I, I like them long, I think the more information up there, the better.
Speedless.
We did have this at one of our meetings last year, that they would be more of a summary, and now that we do have a very reliable streaming source, I think people are, we were still working on the, on the sound, but I think that people are able to follow the meetings and hear what we're saying with the new, with live streaming. So I think that can help, so if people are looking for more details, they can certainly review the video that is posted online. If you're looking for that level of detail.
My YouTube videos are amazing because they also have, oh, they also have closed captioning. So you can hit closed captioning as well, sorry.
So I apologize for not laughing at you, but you came up last night in our policy stuff, because he was recording the meeting that it needed to have translation for how I talk.
Oh, well, I haven't shown that.
It needs to be like a whisper version of.
I thought it did, I haven't heard, checked that out yet, but I thought it did a pretty good job of closed captioning, the closed captioning, but now I have to go back.
There was one in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We will move on to the superintendent's update.
Thank you. I had so many positive experiences in the run-up to vacation, but by far, the most poignant moments came from the holiday sing-along at Stony Hill. It was the first sing-along since COVID made us fearful of assembling indoors in large groups. It was indeed a beautiful noise, and at one point, the staff member standing next to me began weeping as she was overcome with emotion. She turned to me and said, this one always gets me. I told her, you're not the only one, and I pointed out that there were two other staff members who were similarly affected, so that was a great experience. I'm entering the final phases of my entry plan, I'll be conducting final observations at Sewell Road in Green Meadows over the course of the next few weeks. Then I'm gonna have to find some time in my schedule to organize a summary of the major themes that have emerged from my introduction to the district, so I can share them with you all. With respect to the strategic plan, I can report that I joined my LPD-EC colleagues to interview candidates to replace the DEIB coordinator who left the position. We narrowed the field to two extremely strong candidates, and I think either one would be a great partner, a great thought partner for us all as we work to create more inclusive districts. I also want to report that we conducted a family reunification drill, which was one of our strategic plan goals in the climate and culture domain. The drill was completed at Green Meadows and simulated an emergency situation in which it was not possible or not safe to dismiss students by the usual means. In that case, our protocol is to utilize what's known as a double gate system, in which parents would be met at a request gate, and students would be released from a release gate to be re-unified with their verified requesters. As you can imagine, it's a technically challenging process, and it's also quite time-consuming when it's implemented in real-world situations, which is why it's good to practice. As I've been recording, the Green Meadows team has been putting a great deal of time and effort into planning for the drill, and the feedback was the systems worked as expected, so that's a step forward for us in our emergency preparedness. I'd like to encourage the public to attend the town hall event. Let's talk about underage drinking, which will take place Thursday, January twenty-sixth at six PM in the Minichad auditorium. This event is sponsored by the Hamden Overhand Partners for Youth Coalition. And finally, I also just want to share something else you can be proud of. Some of you know from personal experience that educators are required to obtain a hundred and fifty professional development points, or fifteen continuing education units every five years to maintain their licenses. Fifteen of those PDPs must be related to effective schooling for students with disabilities and instruction of students with diverse learning styles. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents is currently offering a course that meets this requirement for administrators. The class began yesterday, and I was happily surprised to find that a third of the active administrators enrolled in the course were from our district. So we're definitely punching above our weight, and I believe the course will help our administrators build their capacity to meet the diverse needs of all learners, which is one of our strategic plan goals. Above all, I think it shows that we are committed to learning and growing together so that we can better serve our students, and that's my report.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay, anything for future events, agenda items? Right now, we have approached the foreign language of the district. What are our students doing post-graduation, and what do we value?
Could we have a vocational night, an LPD-EC night? It struck me at our last meeting that there is conversation about vocational need, vocational need, vocational need, yet we have, I would think, a role, and we pay, we attend, right, to be a member of LPD-EC, and there may be an opportunity that so we could have a greater understanding of the offering as we was looking at this.
understanding of the offering, as we was looking at the district, to be kind of a help for me, kind of.
The other thing is I had, had a conversation with Ron DiCursio, who heads up the boosters, and he asked.
Sorry.
I had a conversation with Ron DiCursio, who heads up the Minichaw boosters. And he asked that if he could still, a few minutes, if we could sort of spend a little bit of time in the future agenda, just talking about how the boosters are organized, why they're organized, that right. And just to give people an idea, because I guess things have kind of been running a little bit askew from the way they have in the past in terms of fundraising.
And along with that, what else to throw up? What? We haven't had the Overhand Hand and Academic Trust come and speak to us in a long time. Usually, we would get them monthly, right? It's not each meeting.
I think that usually comes with, like, asking?
I don't know if I would just stand and think.
Hey, that very is iteration.
All right.
Motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Good night, Mary.
No. Thank you.